Good evening. If you all could take your seats, please. Thank you all so much for coming tonight. I'm going to be a little bit tethered here because I've got a lot of wires. We are live streaming. So if you want to go back and look at this, you'll be able to see that shortly. Let me check one thing. So the live stream, if you go back and watch it after it's done and it's recorded and posted, it will contain the slides that I'm going to be showing you tonight on these screens here. Maybe I should... Should I turn on the screens on the back TVs as well? Hopefully, you all can see these up here. I'll work on doing that while I talk because I don't want to delay anything. Maybe not. Okay, my name is Tina Brown or Christina Brown. My city email is cbrown@cityofhouston.com because my first name is Christina. I am a council member. And a couple of years ago, when I got elected and took office, I was asked to sort of work with Parks and Recreation, which was awesome. It's exactly what I would have chosen for myself. And so I really appreciated that. What I didn't anticipate is that there would be a lot of controversy about it. But there is. So the first way that we communicate bidirectionally is by sharing all the information. And then we can talk about what's best for the city once we have the information. So I wanted to take a minute to, first of all, acknowledge that I have several council members here, several candidates. I appreciate you all coming. I hope that we can share some knowledge and with the community input. It's going to be informal in that I do have a slideshow. If you have a question during a slide, I'm not going to ask you to hold it till the end for comments or anything like that. I've got Councilmember Dave Brown in the audience. He's got the microphone. He can run over to you if I let him know where you are. And we'll get that question as they come up because if you're like me, you might forget if you have to hold it till the end or it may lead to other questions later on down the line. So at the end, if there's time, then it will be just kind of an open discussion thing if there's anything left. So I wanted to thank so many people. Not going to name them. I've asked a gazillion questions of city staff. And I had somebody who volunteered to make the flyer for this meeting for me. And it's just been people that have helped me give direction to this whole presentation. So I thank you all. The technology's working now and I hope it hangs with us. And with that, I'll go ahead and start. So this is just information. It's the City of Houston Parks Town Hall. And I hope to share where we're at now and then get ideas from you if you have some, any kind of input you want at all. Just don't throw any tomatoes or anything. So why do parks matter? A minute ago, I said, you know, I was asked to work with Parks and Recreation. And it was a great honor. And it would have been my first choice and all that anyway. To me, it's intuitive. The city needs parks. A city needs parks. People need parks. But lately, there's been a lot of chatter and a lot of disagreement on this very point. And it kind of shocked me. Some of it seemed to be rooted in misinformation. Some of it's just personal life experience or differences of opinion. So I thought I could at least address the misinformation. It's the number one need that the city has expressed a need for. We're about to adopt our comprehensive plan for the next few years. And in appendices of that, they show you the actual results of one of the surveys that's been taken. But we've done multiple Mark Koeman in the process of doing the comprehensive plan. There've been several surveys. And Parks and Recreation, green space always comes up in probably the top, but the top three for sure. In fact, it was interesting. I think the figure is about 55% of the residents of Houston who responded to the most recent survey said that parks were very unsatisfactory or unsatisfactory. Okay, so not neutral, not positive, not very positive. But 55% felt something was very much lacking. So parks add to the quality of life. It brings the community together. You may live in a community that has some common green space and you may have activities there and all that. But imagine if every neighborhood had that. We would still be just a cluster of neighborhoods. We want a central place where we can come together as a city and unite as a city. The Houston Fall Festival was amazing. And things like that could be more often. We could have them more often. We could have drama groups down there at an amphitheater. You can have more music performances. You can have more Food Truck Friday type things. It brings the community together. It provides passive recreation for an increasingly dense population. So right now, we have over 1,800 townhomes and over 700 apartments approved. And a lot of the single families are pretty tight together. Repeat the numbers. 1,801 townhomes, over 700 apartments. The single families are close enough that we used to call them cluster homes in some neighborhoods. So that doesn't provide an abundance of green space or an outlet for that outside energy or to breathe fresh air or to just be in the greenness, if you will, walking trails, things like that. So we want to provide that passive recreation for those people who might be stacked on top of each other. It increases resident satisfaction as well. It seems obvious. So the cost of developing, there's been clearly questions about developing lands that are dedicated to parks currently. Well, the cost of developing something residential or commercial instead of parks, let's say it's 10 acres, whatever number is. When it's residential or commercial, but more so residential, you have two police officers per 1,000 residents committed as our level of service based on our impact fees. So residences, you have to have more police. Also, the more dense the population, I think our police chief would back me up on this and statistics do as well, the denser the population, the more calls you have. We get on each other's nerves when we're packed together. We need an outlet. I'm sorry. Park, 10 acres of park. Let's talk about, I don't know how many dwelling units you could put on 10 acres. 120 apartments, more, 200? They're all going to need water. In a park, you have a restroom, a couple of restrooms. They're all going to need sewer, same thing. Restrooms, a couple of restrooms. So the demand on water and sewer for 10 acres of parkland is negligible. 10 acres of commercial, residential, or some mixture thereof, not negligible. And those are very real concerns in the city right now. We also have some administrative things. Okay, a park, while it needs mowing and some maintenance and all that, we don't have water bills to process and we don't have tickets to pay. And think, well, maybe you could. So anyway, so let's talk about the parks. This is our vision from our comprehensive plan. I just highlighted a couple of things where in our vision statement, we mentioned diverse amenities, welcoming public spaces, and that we need to have a sustainable investment in parks to enhance the quality of life, support economic growth, and engage the community. Parks do support economic growth because people will come. If you have a beautiful park, I mean, I personally have thought to myself on a random Saturday or Sunday, hmm, what's going down, going down, on down and winder in their green spaces and things like that. So you can bring people from the outside in and that would promote economic activity surrounding the park. So it is an economic driver. It's not just a waste of land. So just briefly, current, this is what we have currently. The top two I highlighted orange because those are counted in our parkland inventory, but they are managed by the Jackson County Recreation Department. And they're not passive. That's the soccer fields, half of them. And that's the ballpark, the ball fields back there on Cabin Drive back behind us. Okay, so although that 13 acres is part of our parkland inventory when we're trying to meet our level of service for parkland, it's really not used by Houston residents too much unless your kid plays soccer or baseball or whatever. We have zero passive green space, walking trails, things like that. East Broad Street and the Highway 53, those two. I'll show you maps of this, maps of this when we get down to it. But those two are, it's the playground across from, well, in the depot parking lot essentially, and the green space to the right of the depot as I'm looking at the depot now. It has the little Darby building and things. So that's what those two, that's about, hmm, what? Four tenths of an acre. All the yellow highlighted actually add up to 1.78 acres down there on Oak Street. It's broken up because it was originally broken into lots to build homes and was dedicated to the city sometime in the last few years instead. Then the four at the bottom, the green highlighted ones are what we're currently calling the Mulberry Park, which is 4.78 acres. It was actually 6.78, but two have been carved out for parking. So 4.78 are due to be developed soon. More on that. The remaining three pieces are what I refer to as the Blankenship property. So the Blankenship sold that to the city about two years ago with the intent for it to be park space. And we'll talk about more of that in a few minutes as well. But that added, oh, looks like about 15 acres, 15 plus acres there. So that's our current inventory. I have a strike through on 79 City Square because this used to be green space right here. And it's obviously taken up by a building now. So not a big loss, quarter of an acre. But it's just not accurate to have it there. So I struck through it. No big deal. So this is future land use map. What I wanted to show you here, I'm laughing at myself. Hold on. I didn't think about this because I borrowed a laser pointer, not realizing it was absolutely not going to work. I'll step away from the microphone a minute. What I wanted to show you here is a couple of things. Number one, the multi-use path that is sort of in progress. You can see maybe the heavy black line there. So that is connecting Peachtree Road. We've already got the piece of the multi-use path behind, outside Alma Farms. What says R1? I can actually use my mouse to kind of help me point and maybe that'll help people too. It's, if you can follow, there we go. So this is already complete. This big yellow piece, this one and this one, were all purchased by the City of Houston for our new municipal complex, which includes some green space and room for a civic center in the future if we choose to. So this piece right here, I'm so sorry. This piece right here will then border the municipal complex. So I'm, we should be free to extend the multi-use path there. And then this section right here is behind an apartment development that was to be named the Enclave. And part of the conditions of approving that apartment development was that this part of the multi-use path would get done. That connects us to White Street, which brings us all the way up to the Mulberry Park, the garage, and then this other parkland. So this, I'll wait. I'll talk all over myself if I don't. So connectivity from Peachtree Road, which means all points south, Crestwind, Twin Lakes, the Kinnerly property development. I always get it mixed up on naming. So the parks will be connected to South Houston. And then of course, I mean, it'll be connected in Central is my point for that slide. So this is the projected need. Originally, when we instituted the park impact fees, it was 5.33 acres per 1,000 residents. And about a year and a half ago, maybe a year ago, we reduced that to four acres per 1,000 residents. There were several reasons behind that. But this is calculated based on the new four. If it was calculated at the old rate, we would be more short, if you will, of land than we are now. But so our population currently, we're fine thanks to the Blankenship, Blankenship selling us their property. But if you project out to 2044 when they expect the population to nearly triple to almost 19,000, we are close to 40 acres short at the new calculation. It would have been a bit more than that at the old. So impact fees, I've talked about that a couple of times. This is, impact fees are charged for new developments. We cannot charge park impact fees for commercial because you can only charge impact fees when they have an impact on that item, if you will. Okay, so we charge park impact fees for residential only because the residents are bringing in residents, which means they need park space based on our comprehensive plan. So I just wanted you to see what we get per dwelling now. So we have an account, a park impact fee account. And every time, I don't know if this is at Land Disturbance or at CO or exactly when, to be honest, but we collect that per dwelling resident. So if it's not age restricted, not a retirement community, the park, we get $935 per new home. If it's age restricted, it's 700 about. And then townhomes are 776 per dwelling. And that goes into an account that we are supposed to use for a couple of things, acquiring parkland and/or what we call capital improvements, things that will last longer than 10 years on that parkland. And I just did it to myself. I do this all the time. Yes? I tried, I probably have to get closer. Any questions? Okay. So the park impact fee program was started in 2020. And it, when it was calculated how much it would be for dwelling unit, we said, hey, we're going to get 75, we'll give $75,000 per one acre, which is out of date now. In fact, when I was reading the impact fee recently, it says we need to reevaluate it every two years and it's been six or five. So it might be time to reevaluate because we're not going to get it for 75,000 an acre now if any parklands that we hope to acquire is going to be more than that. We have to use the impact fees in six years. I don't know how Tiffany does it. But you have to keep up, I mean, accountants are good at these things. She has to keep up with when each impact fee was collected and make sure that it's encumbered, which means already set aside for use. We've already broken land on that. I mean, broken ground on that project or whatever. It has to be used or encumbered within six years. So it's kind of a rolling six-year thing. And if we don't use it, we have to give it back to the developer. And I think most people that I've heard from would rather the developer help the city enhance its infrastructure, which includes Parks and Recreation, as opposed to increasing taxes to acquire additional parkland or improve parklands. So this is one of the ways that we kind of put it back on the developer. Hey, you're impacting our city. You're bringing in more residents. We need some more park space. Impact fees. It can only use for land acquisition or capital improvements. Capital improvements, again, are things that are going to last 10 years. So we could throw a restroom on a park facility and use impact fees for that or we can actually buy acreage. So we have used the funds for the Mulberry Park, that acreage, that original acreage, we paid for in full. There's not a loan on that. When we went to the Blankenships and wanted to acquire their land, we paid the down payment from park impact fees and we pay monthly payments. They were so generous that it's interest-free, owner-financed kind of thing. So that's all coming out of park impact fees, which is really good. I mean, we probably didn't have the balance to pay it all off in full. But what's good is as the park impact fees come in, as houses are built, then we are just funding that monthly payment. So it worked out nicely. Also, 15 point, 15 and a half percent of the new municipal complex property was park impact fees because about that much of the property will be green space, little small spots for picnic tables and such like that. So that's what it's, what those impact fees have done for the city. Status update, Oak Street. I don't know what history I was thinking about here except to say that it was a bunch of building lots. Does have water running through it, which creates a lot of difficulties. You have to, like even clearing the banks, you have to hand-clear it. You can't use machines. You can't use poisons and things like that. You can't build anything too close to the stream buffer. So we could probably put in some walking trails, some picnic tables, that kind of thing. I talked to the Crestwind Friends of the Monarch Butterfly Club a month or two ago. And they're very, very interested in donating a lot of man-hours and expertise to helping us put a little butterfly patch there. Don't know how that's going to work budget-wise because even though they're volunteering a lot of things, it, there would be some cost incurred. So I'm just throwing that out there as a really great idea because it is kind of limited what we can do. I also look forward to and would post if we do this, a community clean-up-the-bank day. There's no trash per se, except that Tonka truck in there. But there's a lot of kudzu and privet and we are allowed to hand-clear invasive species. So we can't go in there and cut down a nice oak tree or anything like that. But we can clean up kudzu, poison ivy, privet, invasive species. But it has to be hand-cleared. Again, we cannot use poisons because there's running water through there and we cannot use power tools, not, you know, chainsaws or bush hogs or anything like that. Open to future ideas there. I think what part of the history was the DDA a couple of years ago actually got some estimates for doing quite a bit out there, a pavilion and this and that and the other thing. And they started in the hundreds of thousands, not in the budget right now. And then I attempted one more time this year to try to get some ideas. And I think I heard, I never saw this one. It was over a million. So they're trying to do a little bit more with it than I anticipated. I just picture kind of a passive space. It's beautiful, that you can walk around, that you can sit beside the little creek. I don't even know if the water flows all the time. Anyway, so that's Oak Street. It's a little less than two acres, little more than a pocket park. There's a Q Public of it, just kind of showing you where it is if you know where New Street is. And that's 332 at the bottom. I sort of did a sloppy highlight around all of it. So it runs the length of Oak Street. And then it pops over the creek for this little section right here on New Street, which I sort of envisioned, it doesn't really connect. You could do a bridge, but golf cart parking so that you could get over there and do your picnic or whatever. But anyway, so that's Oak Street Park. Mulberry slash Blankenship, I did it that way because it's contiguous tract. History, it was purchased fully with a park impact fees. The original land was close to seven acres. Two of them have been set aside for parking. It's gravelled right now. I think the city hopes to do a parking deck there one day. But even if we paved it in the interim, there's a lot of parking to be had on two full acres. So we can kind of reserve our options on what to do there and still increase parking if we would like. The additional 17 acres was purchased from the Blankenships, which I've mentioned. So the current status in general is, the flyer that I put out on Facebook has the site plan, if you will. It's been modified a little bit, but in general, that's the plan that we're moving forward with to get, it should go out for bids this month to get that developed. It is in the budget next year to get it accomplished. More on that later. I'm sorry? Um, there were a very few, the flyers, I'm sorry, the question is copies of the flyers. There were very few that were printed, so they may be gone. It's posted on every Facebook page known to man and I can print more. The Plaza Pavilion thing, just throwing this out there. So the plan sort of eliminated, I don't know if y'all remember the Mulberry House, okay, that we just demolished. The plan sort of cut that out because we didn't know what we were going to do with it. It had been discussed about rehabbing it, turning it into a restaurant, turning it into offices for some city commissions and things like that. But ultimately, it was too much to make ADA compliant, bring it up to code, get rid of the critters in the attic and replace all the windows and all the things. So we took it down. So now we had the space and I envisioned a pavilion there. And ideally, I'd love to sell engraved bricks. That way, it would be a self-funding brick pavilion. There's already a drive that goes from Mulberry all the way around and back out where you could park food trucks and end up having picnic tables on that pavilion. I'm just dreaming. Y'all throw me your dreams? Yes? A roof was put on, the only improvement to that Mulberry House was a roof. And I believe the number's 14,000, maybe 17,000. Yes, it was re-roofed. And then it was torn down, yes. We've actually in the past done with the University of Georgia a charrette, which is kind of a downtown plan. Never looked at it. Well, I did.
Sorry, Debbie. Oh, hey. Debbie, did you say that we're getting a, hiring a consultant or a city planner? Land planner? Yeah, so maybe that would be avoided having to spend for improvement and then tear something down. I mean, right?
Thank you. So Tina, so we spent $14,000 on a roof, or 17,000, and then we spent 50,000 to tear it down?
Yes. The previous council put the roof on and I believe had a vision to do something with that house. I personally had several contractors come in and tell me it would be north of half a million dollars to get it ADA compliant because you had to take a bathroom from the second floor to the first floor. It was held up by jacks, like permanent jacks, and had no ADA compliant features whatsoever. And all electrical, all plumbing would have to be redone. There was no HVAC system in it at all. Obviously, you would have to put in central HVAC. It tested positive for asbestos. So even if you're not a contractor, you can imagine there was a lot. So my personal opinion is it would have been a good idea to have that evaluation done prior to putting the roof on. I wasn't part of that council. The roof? I, you know, I don't know. I don't know. Yes, it's been at least five years.
So I, just for a little history on that Mulberry House before people get too worked up, about $50,000 for tearing it down. A previous mayor and council bought that property for $500,000 after it had just been bought by one of the mayor's friends for $200,000 45 days earlier. So if you want to be mad at somebody, you need to be mad at the previous mayor and the council that paid an exorbitant amount of money for a friend to profit $300,000 off of that property. And so that, the property had no due diligence done on it before it was bought whatsoever or they would have known all the things that Ms. Brown found out. So I just, I want to make sure everybody's So I just, I want to make sure everybody's mad at the right people and not trying to shift the blame of why we ended up with a piece of property that was worthless. He's currently running for mayor again.
So, just, um- The land, Mulberry property was purchased November twenty-third, 2020, for two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And then it was April thirtieth, 2021, so it was actually about five months.
(inaudible)
Yeah, five months for five hundred thousand, so it was more than double, two fifteen to five hundred.
And, and the city had to sign a quick letter to them when the first outlaws was announced. So we knew it was supposed to-
(inaudible)
Well, that has, I remember, members just came along with us, and those people, one of them-
Okay. I don't want to take up too much of your time this evening. I just want to share facts.
I, I have something that it takes us a different direction a little bit. Um, I had to do some therapy, and I had to do it in a pool.
Okay.
I had to go all the way to Gainesville, which Gainesville has a really nice complex, two interior pools and an exterior pool, and how do we get something like that?
A mileage rate of thirty percent? I don't know. I, I'm joking, but water facilities, aquatic facilities are millions of dollars. The city will need to grow before we can get something like that. That's just the truth. Like, annexation and, and growth. It's, you know, people had suggested to me water features, just like a splash pad. Well, to install those is between a hundred and fifty and four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, not to mention the maintenance and operations annually. Even a splash pad is just not something we're ready to consider right now.
Splash pad, like, is it just part of-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, an aquatic center, you need quite the population, quite the tax base for that. I'm sorry.
I just, actually, actually, there's one opening in Jefferson.
Okay.
Did you hear that, sir?
Yeah, Jefferson, I've seen-
There's one opening in Jefferson, probably by the end of the year, indoor swimming.
Yes.
Just real quick, just so, we talking about the land planner, because of these mistakes right here, we're probably now talking four hundred thousand dollars worth of mistakes. I all heard, you've all heard, we need a land planner. We do have some money, budget it. Yeah, it would save us a lot of money. Before we do anything, really, moving forward, I think everybody on the council, including myself, are in favor of parks. We want the city to have park space. We can show you numbers, the same what that should look like.
Okay.
And I'd love for it to have that, but I want to make sure that we talk about the land planner before we go too much further, because enough mistakes have been made in the past. I sit on city council, I don't want to see any more mistakes either. I really don't.
So the land planner is a different meeting. The land planner is in discussion in the budget and things. We have met with a gentleman who seems to have great ideas. I don't want it to go the way of the charrette and be ignored, and I'm not sure what the city is physically, infrastructurally prepared to move forward with, should we come up with a fantastic plan. But that's a different meeting. So the Plaza Pavilion, surveys, I'll be putting out some surveys, like Survey Monkeys through time, because it's not locked in that it's going to be called-
Pardon me?
-Mulberry Park. In fact, there's a Mulberry Park-
Pardon?
-right there in Gwinnett County, so-
Pardon?
I think it would be really cool if the citizens-
Pardon me?
-had input. Please raise your hand, I can't even see where you're coming from. Um, if the citizens had-
I'll stand up for you, so you can see me.
And then, wait one second while I finish my sentence.
Okay, great.
Um, so it would be cool if the citizens had input, not only did what features they want, but the naming of the park, ideas for the Blankenship property. I love the idea of disc golf and some other sort of passive, but yet, some recreation opportunities there. But I would love to do surveys for ideas for what we can do with it, naming ideas. The Mulberry plus Blankenship, just going to finish this slide, and I'll get right to you. Mulberry plus Blankenship gives us a large, centrally-located green space. It also provides, you know, we keep talking about economic development, and I don't want to, you know, pave over the entire city for, in the name of economic development. But I think you'll get, and I haven't done the analysis, I'm sure it's out there somewhere, you'll get, quote, beachfront property, if you have a nice, large, central park that draws people in, and you can have perhaps dwelling units on top of ice cream shops and coffee shops and, I don't care, tobacco shops, whatever you want over there. But it creates an environment that draws people to it, which will in turn attract commercial. And perhaps if, if we end up with sewer in 2035 and beyond, we can put dwelling units above and do that mixed-use thing, like Swanee or some of the other cities that people talk about. And yes, please.
Yes. First, I'd just like to say that you do have a great presentation, seems like you're well thought, and I, too, agree, I want parks here. I want recreation, we have a son, we are looking to grow our family, like, certainly, that's definitely something that we all want here, but I also want to be able to park downtown. I also want to be able to do so many other things that we can't, well, we, we're, fact is, we're a small city that is growing for the first time tremendously, and we have tons of things to do. And parks and recreation, for sure, up there on the list. Question I have is, is it really going to bring more economic growth than, say, just a parking garage? Is it really going to bring, like, when we come down to, one, how much is it actually going to cost? And if we, we don't, we can't even really get to that, because there are so many things that we have to grow as a new city growing that it just makes sense, before anybody starts a business, what do they do? They go to the SBA and they help them write a business plan. They go to a professional to help them get a business plan. When you have people that are in city council for the first time, yes, you're professionals, but nobody here has really run a city, wouldn't it be wise to get counsel from someone who has done it time and time again? So we're not wasting on them. You know, that's all.
Thank you. To address the parking, if we take the two acres and simply pave it until what, if something is decided and funded, we get two hundred and eighty spaces. We already have twenty-four spaces that are marked off parallel beside that, that is three hundred and fourteen spaces. Connected by multi-use paths will be the municipal complex, and that will have, I don't remember the number of parking spaces, but I'm sure it'll be a couple of hundred, and it will be connected through a multi-use path, so you could park even at the municipal complex and walk. So I don't think parking in the short term is, is too much of an issue. I personally would pave, and then if a parking deck is, is where we go in a couple of years, because we have funding for it, there's nothing against putting it right where you pave those two hundred and eighty spaces. So, um, excuse me.
Would the park cost more than a splash pad?
I would like to be able to recognize you, so we're not talking over each other. Trying to think of the other, oh, we're back to the land planner. A master plan is a great idea, no doubt. We just have to be able to do something with it.
Something more?
We have to be able to do something with it, and I would love for it to be binding to a future council, so it doesn't go the way of the charrette, that it never was used. And anyway, park meeting. So this is showing you the seven acres. It shows you where the Mulberry House was, so it is cut out, actually, this is showing you five acres. So this is where, I was thinking about the plaza, the pavilion that you'll see in the site plan, it's down here. This is the, quote, parking for now. The two acres has not been fully cleared, we have it just gravelled and all that, but if you clear that two acres and you paved it, you could get two hundred and eighty spaces. We now have parallel spaces right along here. This is White Street down through here, which will connect through multi-use paths from the municipal complex and all the way down to Peachtree Road. Whoops, went too far. So this is the park plan, I know you can't see much better than the flyer that I put out there, but that piece that I just showed you right there, this is the park plan for that, if I can, there's the amphitheater, walking trails, play structures, one is for, I don't know the age cutoff, but one is for older children, one is for younger children. This is the former Mulberry House, where we might end up with a pavilion. There is a driveway that goes all the way around, which I envision food trucks, but whatever. So walking trails, play structures, pavilion, and amphitheater. The butterfly people that I mentioned from Crest Wind, this is actually, this space right here that's not spoken for, it's actually a better place to put a butterfly garden, so something could be done here, anyway. So that Mulberry Park project right there, I've got it out of order now that we've started a different conversation, but this is the whole contiguous. So this is, quote, this is the parking, this is the Mulberry project, which is scheduled for next year, and then all of this here bumping up against the Mulberry, and all the way down here with this dog leg, that's the Blankenship property. So it makes one very large central park. Um, Bob?
Yeah, um, the question I have, it sounds like this is a fait accompli, and I didn't know it was. It's just been voted on, does that acreage have to go to the park?
Yes. Which, which acreage are you referring to? The Mulberry Park has been, the original five-acre plan has been voted on multiple times and goes out for bid this month. The fifteen acres purchased from the Blankenship's were purchased with park funds, with the intent of parks, according to the ordinance that was passed, allowing us to purchase it. So yes, my answer to that is yes.
Has it all been voted on by the council?
Yes.
I'm a resident, I don't, I don't know anything about it. I'm making some-
I, I mean, there's, there's some questions that I have, and you're right, on those Facebook pages, there's a lot of going back and forth about parks. I'm not against parks, but I, the Uniline property, the Uniline property has a hundred acres in the contract that we're going to, that our city gets, a hundred acres out of that four hundred acres that Uniline has, and that, and, and that a hundred acres is going to go for a park, and they're going to do some of the improvements on it.
I have that addressed in the last few slides, if you'll bear with me. We will absolutely get there to a thorough discussion of what Uniline has.
And then, and then the Mayor Kennelley's property. I remember watching when we approved, the council approved, the, the, all the homes going in on the Kennelley property on 53, that there's going to be an amphitheater and a park for, for the city.
There's school property, well, it's all, there was, I guess, three properties on Kennelley. One was to be dedicated to the school system, one was to be dedicated to West Jackson Fire, and there is some civic space. I don't remember the acreage of that, but there is some, quote, civic space, yes.
Because, because you know my opinion, you know, we've discussed this. I moved here when I drove down the street from Blue Ridge, Georgia, and I saw the water tower with our name on it in this little village. I fell in love with the place. And, and I'm against, myself, this is a resident, I, I have one vote in this field. I'm against taking a piece of property like that and not moving our city hall, because city hall's going to move.
Yes.
I forgot about it. City hall's too small, I was told, it was a temporary new city hall. I, I got this information later on. But I don't know why city hall in a park doesn't go over there, and we stay in the shadow of the water tower, which is our downtown area. This is, this is the small city of Houston, and I love it that way. And if we move, city hall can be replaced, but this will all be retail, and we have parking over there, have our city hall still downtown, and, and develop that Peachtree property into something else, you know, retail and business. But I, I guess, it sounds like all this money's going to be spent on this park, and, and I don't know, I don't know what we can do about it.
Well, that's why I'm having an informational meeting. City Hall has been voted on as well. And frankly, I think a park and commercial will bring out more people to downtown Houston than a city hall that is closed on the weekend and in the evening. Personal opinion. Depot City Square Municipal, just trying to get through the inventories now. So there's where the Darby Building is, that's a half acre beside the depot, that is, city park property for all to use.
(inaudible) Do you want the presentation?
I will. I also need to get through the presentation.
The presentation? You don't want very many. Any matter.
And I'd like to give you information. Scott, please, I will, I will. I do need to maintain control, because then we lose it. Can you have a seat, please, Jeff? I will get to you. I promise I will get to you. I promise I will get to you, and Scott, I did not ask you to shout out. If I could get the information out, it would be good. So we've got the playground, that is city property. I will get to your questions, I do promise. I didn't say I would get them immediately, because I actually didn't see your hand. I did not hear-
I've been holding my hand up for a minute, trying to say something.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. I'm trying to also respect your time and not keep you very long. I did not see your hands, and I do apologize, and that is sincere. So those properties, I'm getting to a really great stopping point. Those are city properties, any citizen can enjoy that green space there by the Darby House, or that playground there, they're small, but they're city space. Let me see if I'm at, I'll talk about city complex in a minute. So I apologize, I did not see any hands, but I wasn't probably looking for them. So if you have a question? Okay.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out what is everyone's issue with a park? Why, why don't we all want a park? Isn't, isn't that, and, and as far as a, a land planner, I know we work with Razzleton a lot and kind of follow in their footsteps, well, what's the pushback? Why, why don't we want a park right in, in our downtown? Can we just get down to brass tacks and kind of discuss why, what's, why we don't want a park and-
I know. That's what I've sort of been struggling with in the Facebook world for a while, which is why I thought this meeting, actually, just to get the information out there, what do we have, what's going on with it?
I thought it was already voted on and already, it was already happening.
Yeah, yeah.
So what, what stopped it from happening?
I- Do you see a hand?
Right here. (inaudible)
All right, I'm all for a park. I'm all for park space.
Glad to hear it.
Okay. The question is, what's it going to cost?
And I have your answer.
All right. For example, all right, this is down there on the Rockland property, okay, Kennelley. They're going to build a park with an amphitheater.
How many acres is that? Do you know that?
I don't know the acreage, I know it's going to cost just under four million. Rockland's going to put just under four million dollars into, into that development. It's going to have its own separate entrance off of 53, all right? Now, does this city need two amphitheaters? That's my first question, okay? The city, that property will belong to the city, the city will maintain it. So we're going to have the cost of maintaining that park, and now we're going to have another park right here, that's going to cost us how much, all right? And that question needs to be answered, and how much is that going to cost us to maintain it, all right? We're going to have more park space, uh, like Bob pointed out, in two to three years, when Uniline comes back, uh, and I know you all had a meeting with them a few months ago, and you know they're going to be coming in two to three years. And so we're going to end up with all that bottom land, not to mention thirteen-point acres of some prime land up on the southwest corner of it, according to the ordinance. So we are going to have some park land.
I will address that, Uniline acreage and everything. I did not have the Kennelley acreage, so I have that as a question, but I will get back with you on that, how many acres it is. I don't believe the amphitheater was a condition of approval, only conditions are enforceable. The condition may say they're going to dedicate five, ten acres of, of space, but the conditions won't say, hey, you're going to put an amphitheater on and all that, to the best of my knowledge. I'll research it and get back with you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And by the way, if the land planner were to come back and say, we need to put a, a five-acre park on the Mulberry, count me in, hundred percent, okay? I just think that we need to tap the brakes and not make a big mistake financially, all right? What, what the city council really voted on was a, was a grant, okay? They voted on a five hundred thousand dollar grant.
If you will let me continue, I will get to every bit of what you're asking about. Not going to take any more questions for a minute, because I'd like to get through some things, okay? Yes, we voted on using impact fees to buy the parks. Yes, we voted on accepting a grant. Yes, we voted on the design of the park, if I'm not mistaken, that one I may not be right on. All right. So impact, impact fees, fifteen point five percent of the cost of that municipal- All right, so impact, impact fees, fifteen point five percent of the cost of that municipal complex was paid for with impact fees, so we have to dedicate fifteen point five percent of land. So, the municipal complex itself will increase our parkland and green space by eleven point two-one acres, um, wait, one point, that's a whole acreage, I'm sorry, one point seven five acres will be green space. Um, and here I talk about the extension of the multi-use path from Alma Farms to the enclave property, and then that will come to White Street, um, and I mentioned that it's the conditions of the Whites, of the enclave property, so that's not new stuff, we talked about that. There's the municipal complex land down here, again, the car, the multi-use path will, is already here, we should be building that since that borders our land, and then there's, this is a condition of approval here to connect it to White Street, which gets you straight to downtown, which is lovely to have that kind of connectivity. What about Percol? So, in their conditions of approval, which will not stand because there are two condition, two zoning requests that were approved, um, one includes four hundred and fifty dwelling units, a hundred and fifty townhomes, three hundred and single-family homes. So, in the conditions, it says, "We're gonna give you thirteen point eight acres," and they border on the baseball fields back there. We will have to construct, um, a road, I guess, behind the baseball field and our public works building to get back there, so we'll have to construct a road to get access to that, but it's thirteen point eight acres, which on their original zoning request, rezoning request shows as more baseball fields, but of course, the city can do what they want with it if that zoning were to be executed as is approved. Um, also, the second part of it, where the warehouses are to go, there's dedication of eighty percent of the one hundred-year floodplain. That's sixty-nine acres. So, the total is, what does that make that? Um, eighty-two, eighty-three acres of dedicated, uh, land if, as zoned now, those are the conditions as zoned now. But if I go back up to that first bullet point, they get to construct two hundred of these residences before they ever have to dedicate that land to us. Well, it's now owned by Uniline, so when...
It's not supposed to be...
You need to...
It's not supposed to be...
No, two hundred residences.
It's two hundred, it's not supposed to be...
Okay. So, there is no time limit on that. They will, um, not be building residences, we're pretty sure. So, what originally happened is it was bought by someone, they requested the rezoning, part for residential, part for warehouses, then they sold to Uniline. So, we anticipate Uniline will come to us with a rezoning request to make it all warehouses. And at that time, we hope the council will renegotiate and get some parkland out of it, but all bets are off. They are only bound by what's there now, so if they don't move forward with four hundred and fifty residences, um, and they request a rezoning, again, we can work through the conditions and try to get that thirteen point eight acres again or more, or they can tell us to, you know, go kick rocks. I don't know how that'll go down. I'm just here to tell you what's now. So, there's no time limit on that. If they don't move dirt, we don't get that land. Whenever they move dirt, that's when, whether it's two hundred square feet or two hundred buildings or whatever, whatever the thing is, there's not a time limit. The floodplain, eighty percent of the floodplain, sixty-nine acres, that also has no time limit. That particular rezoning says, um, I think it's once the first warehouse is built, the CO, the certificate of occupancy for the first of the multiple warehouses, when that certificate of occupancy is, um, granted, then they have to dedicate eighty percent of the floodplain, or that's sixty-nine acres. Um, so, the current plan is, we think they're gonna request rezoning, uh, we don't have a timeframe. We thought it was gonna be this month, next month, whatever the thing is for a while now, so, um, we're not sure. Um, this is... This is the Percol property. So, this area here is all townhomes and single-family currently, that's not what we anticipate will actually happen. This yellow area here, this is the ball fields, so this is your thirteen point eight acres where we can extend that property and do something with that. Just wanted to show it to you. This is the Mulberry River, and there's no roads. We'll get to that in a minute. So, about the Percol property, location, it is not central to the city, which I would think is desirable. It has no access, no parking, and it is, other than the thirteen point eight acres to expand the ball fields, um, the sixty-nine acres is in a floodplain. That means we have to get engineers involved to do much of anything. Even walking paths, if you put, um, you know, a bridge across or something, you're gonna have to have piers. So, I'd like to get into detail about that, but I saw some hands. Yes, ma'am?
Respectfully, I appreciate the presentation that you're doing right here, but I, I need a city planner, and I need to know where the money is. Where's the money?
Okay.
Because everything that you're saying is gonna require a lot of money, and I don't know where it's coming from.
Okay.
And the other thing is, these grants that we're getting, um, I have something here, uh, from June twenty twenty-three in Georgia Trend, Jackson County Title Wave of Growth. Um, do you know who Jessica Green is, Executive Director of the Houston DDA? She said we have, with our two new developments, we will, we'll have twenty-six hundred new homes, sure, she's talking about Twin Lakes. Um, and she said, uh, "The DDA just received a Georgia Department DOT grant for a sidewalk that will run from Twin Lakes all the way to Brazelton. The seven hundred and forty-four thousand grant will allow residents to travel to downtown in Brazelton via golf carts, bicycles, and walking," Green says. Did that happen? So, where's the seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars?
It was denied, we declined it.
We declined it? Why? So, that was not true? Okay. Okay. Okay, well, that, therefore, a city planner, a land planner.
Okay.
Because, because what you're saying, it just, it just is like, it just doesn't even resonate with me at all, because I, all I see is, we need a plan, like Brazelton, like Duluth, like Swanee, like Sugar Hill, gorgeous, gorgeous. And we do have somebody that offered to help us, that's, that worked with Swanee, that's in Twin Lakes over there, and I don't know why we don't use someone like that to help us, so...
Thank you. So, there is discussion, again, about a city planner, um, or a master plan. Um, again, it's a non-binding thing, and it can be quite expensive and all that, that is not what this meeting's about. Um, Swanee, just since you brought it up, has eleven square miles, we have five point two square miles, Swanee has over six hundred acres of parks and green space within eleven miles, some are operated by the county, some are operated by the city, but they definitely have a great model to follow, I agree. So, this, um, I'm trying not to get too far, I don't wanna keep y'all out two hours, but go ahead.
I'm at purpose, that you said, that they're not moving.
Correct.
Is there something that you can offer them, and they got ninety days to commit to it, some carrot that would make them finally commit to get them off the sale?
No. There's not, there's not. We have instituted some time limits in recent, um, meetings.
I heard of it, it's a carrot.
Oh.
You're ahead of the game, you can do it in ninety days, if not, you'll never get fixed.
Yeah, I'm, there's nothing, there's really not, we have to wait on them. Yes?
I just wanna say one more, because things like your life is getting wrapped up on policy, and for every three hundred and thirty homes...
For every three hundred and thirty homes that are built in this city, that puts roughly a thousand residents in this city. Our comprehensive plan, minimum levels of service, requires two law enforcement officers for every one of those three hundred and thirty homes, that's roughly three hundred thousand dollars a year going forward.
Three fifty.
Three fifty a year going forward. We've already spent forty million dollars on wastewater treatment plant capacity for residences in this community, that when the money we have in our capital budget fund runs out, that two million dollars a year that people will see on the debt servicing, that's gonna have to come from property taxes. If the, once all the houses are built, and we got all the tax fees from them, we're still gonna owe plus to forty million dollars. So, until somebody wants to address that, I don't think we need to be worried about what a park toilet for a men's and women's thing is gonna cost to let people walk around and do things. And I get it that...
Okay, um, I need to...
It's gonna come from your city property tax.
Scott?
Your program's gonna have more of it.
Um, can we take that conversation outside, so I can get through this for anybody who's still interested? Um, so, access and parking is an issue, I said there's no roads in currently, um, these are the ball fields, again, we can, we can at our expense put a road in here to reach the thirteen point eight acres, but that sixty-nine acres is over here. Okay, so there's ac, no access and no parking, I'll show you that again in a minute, better picture. This is there from the rezoning, in green, that is the Wonder Deer floodplain, we get eighty percent of that, you can see that it borders the river, um, in green here is your thirteen point eight acres. The blue are the roads as planned. There is no road getting to this floodplain. So, I'm not sure how citizens are to get there. They would have to literally go by warehouses with trucks backed up to it, but, okay. This is, just another visual of the floodplain. There's also no parking in here, um, I think this is their employee parking or truck parking, there's no parking, no access. Um, and again, I just wanted to show you in this one, this is the Percol property, this is Deer Creek Farms, uh, Quail Crossing, Wildflower, that's Wildflower, Quail Crossing, Alma Farms, all that. So, it is behind these neighborhoods, but there's really not much access for Crestwind or Twin Lakes or the Kennelley property. I will get back with you on how much acreage is in Kennelley property, I think it's less than ten. Um, but again, no access, no roads, no parking, it's in a floodplain. Oh, so let me talk about funding, I don't know how that missed my slides. So, um, the last estimate for just the five acres here was, um, is it one point five million, one point, we think it's gonna come in at one point two-five million to do the, um, amphitheater, the walking trails, the two-place structures and all that. So, one point two-five million, it hasn't gone out to bid, so I'm just putting a number out there that I have heard, not that I made up. And of that one point two-five million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars is a grant. So, now we're on the hook for seven, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is in the budget for next year that we will be voting on soon. We actually had five hundred in it for this year, but there were some delays, um, and that caused us to spend zero, um, except for the demolition of the house, but that didn't come out of park fees. So, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is budgeted for next year in our balanced budget and the five hundred thousand dollar grant. The five hundred thousand dollar grant will expire at the end of twenty twenty-six. So, if we don't get that park built, or at least, um, it's a matching grant, get five hundred dollars of our money spent to match their five hundred thousand dollars, five hundred dollars. If we don't get that done by the end of twenty twenty-six, we can do an extension, I think it's nine months, um, but at the end of that, if we have not dispersed that grant or asked them to disperse that grant to us, we lose it. So, um, that's an added cost if we don't put the park in. We are literally giving away a half a million dollars if we don't get that. I never thought I'd have to fight this hard for a five-acre park, side note. Um, but it is funded almost half, so, and then there's the other thing, like the bathrooms on the property, we may be able to use impact fees for that since they last more than ten years and all that. So, all that to say, the funding is there. We can talk about the future of parks all day, but the five-acre Mulberry Park has been funded, we've accepted grants, there have been multiple votes on it, and we're hoping after bids in October that we might actually move some dirt in this year and get it substantially completed, if not completed, at the end of twenty twenty-six. So, now I'm gonna definitely look for hands, because I am done, and I should've had, uh, I should've had the Kennelley property acreage researched, and I should've had the park grant in there. What I am gonna offer to you is, I will send you the slides if you wanna email me, and I will add in those two pieces, uh, the funding for Mulberry and, um, address the Rockland acreage and what is in the conditions versus, you know, what we hope they're gonna do. Um, let me write the words "funding for Mulberry," and then I am yours for whatever.
Tina?
Hey.
Hey. First of all, thank you. It is a really difficult job to get this going, but I have only one advice for you. Wait for the city planner or whatever you wanna call him. Don't get yourself in a situation where a few years from now, we'll be here saying it was the other council's fault, okay? We need, we need to do things right from the beginning. I love your ideas, but I wanna make sure that when it comes down to it, we're not spending thousands of dollars on buildings, that's all, remember the beautiful garage we have, that we really have no idea what to do with. So, please, take a breath and find someone who knows what to do and get all your ducks in a row before you move forward.
I appreciate your comments. I did speak with the city planner, that was recommended, um, as did all the council members, and he was very much in favor of the Central Park, the beachfront property around that and all, and again, I really don't wanna lose half a million dollars and fail at a park that we have promised for four years now. Um, I think that we are safe regardless of what any city planner says, I think we're safe moving forward with that five-acre park. Um, so that's where I stand on that. Please don't tell me we need a city planner, go ahead, Cynthia.
Okay, I, I just wanna piggyback just a little bit and say that, you know, I just hope that you wait, you at least get the final bid of what it's gonna cost before you commit to spend anything. I know you don't wanna lose five hundred thousand, but it's just like a walk grant. You know, you lost seven hundred and fifty thousand or whatever it was because you, it was gonna cost the city well more than what the grant was, so you lost that grant, you lost that money. So, you might lose five hundred thousand, but you might save two million. But you don't have any idea really what that's gonna cost. You think it's one point two, it could be four point five, you don't know.
It's, um, we work...
You have no idea what a rock wall around that park's gonna cost. You don't know what a play...
A rock wa, there's not a rock wall.
It shows that on the plan.
The existing. The existing, they're beautiful.
But the playground, making it ADA.
So, we're working with an engineering firm, Engineering Management Incorporated, and they are working with Brewer, and we do have a ballpark figure for that, and it was estimated to be one point five. And then I met personally with them and cut out a bunch of the frou-frou, including most landscaping, things like that. So, it is an educated guesstimate, but it is going out to bid this month. So, we're not moving forward without bids, because nobody will do the work without bids, but it is going out to bid this month. So, we will know, we will know that final answer. Um, just one, let him get there with the microphone, 'cause there are others and...
When you're doing these projects, can you not segregate out certain portions of the project? Like, you wanna gain that five hundred, but you say it's gonna cost you seven hundred and fifty to gain that five hundred.
At least five hundred, we have to spend five hundred to get five hundred.
Well, if you only cleared a space for the amphitheater, but you don't commit to it, can you get the five hundred by spending the other five hundred on the rest of the park?
We do...
And then get your five hundred and come back to the amphitheater?
Yes, but the amphitheater will probably fit well within budget. To answer your question, yes. When it goes out for bid, it'll be sort of in elements, so if it goes way over, or if we say, well, we can only spend five hundred, but again, we've budgeted seven fifty. But if it comes out more than the budget amount plus the grant, we can absolutely parse out pieces, we can take out some of the plantings, we can say that second-place structure has to wait till twenty twenty-seven. Yes, they will have it, the bid will be itemized so that we can spend our money wisely.
Hey, Tina, I appreciate all your work, and I love your attention to detail with all the council members, but as I sit here and I hear a company like Uniline, and we're gonna be negotiating with them, who's doing that negotiation? Do we have a... Uniline has cubicles full of attorneys and real estate agents. What, do we have somebody at City Hall, employed at City Hall, that works for the city of Houston, that's able to carry out those no-gays?
We hire out a city planner, and we used to have the most excellent city planner.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, he's not here, but, um...
I think more than a city planner, I'm talking attorney, real estate agent.
We have an attorney as well, but there's no tiger in the box that is what you're asking for. We do not have... We do not have a tiger in the box.
Okay, so that could be an upcoming election question is when we're going to...
Are you going to play hardball?
We need a hardball player, I think.
Absolutely.
We're getting run over is what it sounds like.
It does happen.
You can't believe it. For instance, you're talking about the sidewalk that goes all the way down through here. Well, the biggest problem with that is that there's a varying width of 53, which is a state highway, that is very difficult to deal with because we have businesses in place and buildings in place. We can't just tear stuff down and rebuild it to get a six-foot wide sidewalk. So that product, that in itself is a problem. That's just one of the problems that the mayor is addressing and trying to address. The other problem, and probably the biggest problem of all, is we have had a number of mayors over the last five years. Some have been pretty good, some have been not so good. But nobody has really had the heart of Houston in their mind and what works for the people. Now, I'm a realtor and I deal in land. This is all I do. And I work with counties, I work with cities, I work with land planners, architects, sewer people, power people, water people. All of those people have got to come together to make any one thing happen. And while each of you has a pet idea that you're thinking about, well, trust me, the mayor has every single one of those pet ideas in her head. And sometimes it can be overwhelming. That's why they have the council. That's why Tina has taken on this particular project. It's his own projects. David has his projects. Because none of the, I mean, you got to have a team. And we got to have a team that stays together and works together over a long period of time. And we haven't had that privilege, not in a long time. Now, developers come in here, and I see it every day. Developers are interested in one thing and only one thing. How many houses can I get on that acre of land? Because the price they pay for it, they're going to pay as little as they can. If they can get 12 condominiums on that piece of property, if they can get 15 apartments on that piece of property, I'm talking an acre. You see, there's... So they're going to do whatever they need to do. Rockland gave approximately 20 acres to the city for the purpose of a school, a park, and a fire station. That, we don't know where that property is yet, at least I don't. But I know that it is there, and they're not going to develop that, okay? So there's lots of other things going on. We got, you know, we have a water problem. So the mayor went to Barra County and bought water in return for future sewer processing that's needed by Barra County on 211. They're working on all these things at the same time, and it is mind-boggling. I only have seven projects that I'm working on, one of which is the entire 211 from the roundabout all the way to 124. And I've got two jurisdictions I have to work in that asymmetrically out of sync when it comes to zoning and planning and what happens. It's crazy. So we've got one city that is already deformed. We don't have anywhere to put things. We've got 23 acres over here on the Blankenship property. We've got a gravel area that we're talking about putting parking on. A parking deck's going to cost $5 million, okay? Yeah, well, that was, that was a decent estimate from a guy who knows what he's doing. $5 million for that three-level parking deck that you could enter from two sides. Well, you got to park right next to it. You've got the garage down here, which they bought from Larry's for $800,000 or $900,000. Well, that's a wonderful place in the center of the city that you also have the 11.7 acres they bought across from Dr. Allen's old hospital. So y'all, there's a lot of things going on here that y'all really just don't know about. And it's not that they don't want you to know about them. It's just that they're so complex, they're hard to explain because you say, "Well, I want to do this with this." But there's so many parts and subparts and sub-subparts that you can't imagine, the difficulties that these are dealing with, trying to represent to you wisely and do the things that are important to make the people who live here happy. I happen to know for a fact that people come, walking around the city and say, "Is there a gym here?" Well, no, there's not. I'm... Huh? I happened to, I found a really nice park facility that's over in Monroe because my granddaughter plays volleyball over there. Well, there's two gyms, there's two gyms side by side. There's a little lake out in front of it. It's about a 30-acre complex, which is too big. But the two gyms just by themselves, you've got two gyms, you've got a meeting room in the bottom of it, you've got a weight room in the top of it. It's operated by the county, Walton County, and it is open a lot. So you can go in there and you can, if you're a resident of Walton County, you can use it for free. You know how much it cost? $30 million 15 years ago. That's $45 million today. So there's lots of problems, and the only problems can get solved is with you, the people who live here. I wish I did live here. I don't live here. I live just outside the city limits down 53. That doesn't change the fact that I'm interested in what is happening in this city because I drive through it all the time, you know? So thank you for listening to what I have to say, ma'am.
Are there any other questions about parks or green spaces? My final question, Janice? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to thank you as a councilwoman.
Thank you.
For bringing all this to our attention. And I didn't quite understand the statement of you're having to fight for a position that was given to you as your duty. And I believe you said that this was voted on several times by our current board.
It was.
And I don't understand why you feel that you are fighting this alone.
It was voted on unanimously to accept the grant and the park space, unanimously by the current council. And it was reaffirmed at our retreat. And different ideas popped out there and caught fire, is all I can say. And now that simple five-acre project is at risk again, and losing half a million dollars is at risk again. So I just sort of wanted to lay out what there is here. My question, this was handed out at the back, has a bunch of questions I'd love to answer. Not sure who to address it to, don't want to know, don't care. If you will email me, I promise you this. I'll have updated slides with the Kinnery property, with the cost of Mulberry, and I will have all these questions answered in my reply email to you if you care to follow up on the handout that was given out. My email is easy, but I also have a business card with my city email on it. Thank you all so much for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you.